Welcome, everybody, to the last special session for this conference. And in keeping in the theme of the broader impacts of the work that we do. On the first day, we looked at sort of archiving as a pedagogical tool. The second day, Christine Hildebrand talked to us about bringing experience or voices instead of just the elite's voices and experiences of disasters. And in the third day, we talked about, you know, providing guidelines for how to do inner linear glossing. We had a very academic discussion, but through the year, we're going to continue looking at how to make those kinds of guidelines useful for people who are just starting to work on annotated texts. And today, we wanted to share with you, in keeping with that theme, information about how we can use our expertise in bringing critical health information to the communities that we work with. And I know that many of you already do excellent work in this area. And so we're looking forward to talking with you about one of the projects that's ongoing in this, in this area. So I want to start by welcoming my collaborators, Kelly Burke Son from the University of Indiana, Ken Van Bick from California Fullerton, and Sarah Champlain from the University of North Texas. They will perhaps introduce themselves with a little bit more detail when, when they, when it's their turn. But we're going to start with a PowerPoint, and I think a couple of slides, and then Kelly will take over and we'll, we'll each contribute a little bit to the presentation.
All right. Can you see it?
Yes.
Great.
This is the name of our project, Linguistically Under-served Communities and Health. And we're working specifically with the Chin Refugee Community in Indiana. The project kind of began because in last year, end of last year, I was contacted by somebody from the Austin Health Network saying that they needed people translating for people from Burma who were coming to their health network for help. And there just weren't enough people, people knew Burmese for translation, but not any of these other languages. I contacted Kelly, we were talking, COVID happened. We brought all of these kind of interests together, and this project came of that. It is a National Science Foundation-funded project, and we'd like to tell you a little bit about it. Can I, I will say next.
Yeah, say next.
Next. These are the people involved. And we can go forward. Okay. So what we thought we would do is that, that we would not just rely on translations of information that come directly from CDC or other organizations, but actually try to understand conceptions of disease, perceptions of how people get better, what does it mean to be sick? Why do people get, what, what kinds of interventions are needed to, well, again, by reviewing what was in the literature, what's in the books. We realized that there's really very little done on this, on information seeking for under, under documented languages for smaller communities. And so we wanted to know, since there is an urgent need to get the message about COVID-19 to these groups, how should that message be made relatively relevant? Or do we have the tools to make that happen? And so this was our first question, that we wanted to not just stop at what was being done already, but to explore the possibilities of making this message one that was going to be heard and adapted and adopted. So I think my colleague Sarah is going to take over, and Sarah can tell the story maybe of how we met as well. Sarah, it's all yours.
Just briefly, hey, I'm, I'm Sarah Champlain. I'm also at the University of North Texas. And I'm actually an advertising professor, and my research focuses on health communication and the visual presentations of, of health information. And specifically, my work focuses on health literacy. And health literacy sounds like it would have a lot to do with the language and the texts involved on health education materials, such as the ones that you see on this slide. But for artwork, a lot of it has to do with visuals and how things are presented in a visual way. And like Dr. Trilia said, I just kind of reached out to her. We had a big meeting, UNT had a big kind of campus-wide meeting for anyone interested in, in COVID-related projects. And of course, there's lots of hard sciences involved, physics, biology, chemistry, and things like that. But the social scientists and linguistics and many other communities are very interested in contributing to COVID-focused research. And there are a lot of ways that we can do that. So she said the word "communication," and even though I'm in advertising, which is a pretty different field, I was really excited to talk to her because we actually had a lot of overlapping interests. And it's been fun to work with Dr. Burke Son and Dr. Van Bick all, all throughout the summer, worked the entire summer, and Kelly's team out in Indiana, to really kind of figure out, well, what, what do we already know and what can we be doing better? And there's a lot to cover on this topic. But for this slide in particular, and I might not be talking to, to a room full of linguists and people focused on, on text and, and communication in that way. I just want to continue to reiterate that, like, the CDC, and in this case, the visuals are from the World Health Organization too, they do, they do translate a lot of the materials for COVID, right? They, they do a lot of different translations. And we found that some of the COVID-related materials are translated in Burmese, but isn't enough. And to me, it's also not enough that when you look at these translations on the page, yes, the text is translated, but the visual information is not. It's not culturally tailored to these specific communities. And it suggests that the CDC and the World Health Organization are implying that disease, illness, how we print diseases and illnesses and how these things are transmitted, it suggests that all of these cultures and all of these languages interpret these things the same way. And we know that that's not the case. But there's a pretty limited body of literature that would help us kind of bolster or tailor some of these images to specific populations. So that's another goal of the study that's kind of different than your traditional linguistic stuff, I think. Okay, you could go to the next slide. Thanks, Kelly.
Chauvin, you're muted.
Yeah. So it's been really great meeting and working with a lot of different people, especially the newest thing has been working with, with, with Sarah on this. One of the things we wanted to do is, so here are our goals. We want to know more about what people think about health wellness and, and illness. How are we going to do this? So what we decided to do was to do some virtual interviews. Obviously, we're the time of COVID. We cannot go out and actually do interviews the way we would before. But there is a large population of speakers of Hakalai in Indiana. And so we, and Kelly's going to talk about her communications and her work with them already. We thought, okay, if we could build some protocols for virtual communication, for working over Zoom, to do these interviews and have native speakers be the interviewers, then maybe we will get information that is valuable, much more so than if we were asking the questions as outsiders or just sort of doing surveys. So we combined both the survey work, some covering here, we looked at, and the goal for this was both to disseminate the information and to improve the effectiveness of the information that we kind of gave to our, the people we're working with. Next slide, please. So what we had to come up with was kind of a language documentation methodology that hasn't been used previously because, or at least not widely known. And that was, I'll give you some of the details of it. Students are being trained to use Zoom to talk to people in their communities, to record using Zoom, and then to, to transcribe and translate that. And we'll tell you a little bit more about that as we progress in the presentation. But the people that we're working with are people that, I think Kelly's going to tell us more about, the Indiana Chin community. And we hope that this is sort of a case study for work that we can do more of with other communities in, in the US.
Okay. So the, we will get back to details about the actual project that we're working on, but to sort of set the, the stage for it. My team is basically the Chin Languages Research Project, or the Chin Languages Research Team. This is a collaboration that's been under development for about three years. It involves speech scientists from IU and increasingly from other institutions as well, and also members of the Indianapolis Chin community. So what some of you may not know is that in Indiana, which is the state that's colored red in this map and circled, there's really quite a large population of Burmese refugees, so maybe upwards of 25,000 people live here. And just to zoom out from that for a moment, this is a situation that exists in Indiana because of larger circumstances in the world today. I think many of you are probably aware of this, but it, it bears noting that according to the UN High Commissioner on Refugees, rates of forcible displacement are higher today than they've ever been before on record. There are about 80 million people worldwide who have been forcibly displaced. Someone new is forcibly displaced every two seconds. And so what that means, like, in cold, hard numbers, is that during this 30-minute talk slot, 900 new people will be forcibly displaced. So we can talk about what the ramifications are for that and, and sort of the ways in which this changes the way we can think about linguistic fieldwork. For us, what it means is that we at Indiana University Bloomington, the Bloomington campus, are an hour away from Indianapolis, which is home to between 17,000 and 20,000 Burmese refugees. They hail mainly from Chin State, so this is starting to change. There are new populations developing on the north side of Indianapolis, but on the south side, where people are currently located mainly, mainly from Chin State. Many don't speak Burmese, but there are 30 or more Chin languages being spoken robustly in Indianapolis. And we are currently working with three of these languages. So Hakalai, which many of you are familiar with, is a lingua franca, not only in Chin State, but also in Indiana. So we think that about 10,000 people speak it in Indianapolis. We're also working with Zopay, which is spoken by about 20, 18, 20,000 people worldwide, 4,000 people in Indianapolis. Samson Lotvin is in the crowd somewhere, and he's writing a dissertation on Zopay right now. We're also working with Lutuv, which is spoken by, we think about 600 people in Indianapolis, but we're less sure about that number. And then there are many, many other languages represented as well. At some point, we'd love to do a community language survey, but for now, we're just saying between 30 and 50 languages. I think 30 is too small a number. I think 50 is too big, so we'll see. What this means, though, is that we're just an hour away from a place where there are a lot of communication needs, as is true in any refugee community, and also a tremendous number of opportunities for linguistic research. So the sort of goal that we at the Chin Languages Research Project have is to do linguistic work, but also be of service at the same time. The way that we think about this is that we're trying to build a community that has stakeholders from, let's say, four-ish different bins. So our team includes students from IU. This is both Chin undergraduate students, who are members of the Indianapolis community, and linguistics students, graduate and undergraduate, community members in Indy, so parents, younger siblings, church leaders, elders, members from local organizations and businesses. So we're often contacted by schools or by medical facilities that are seeking information in some of these Chin languages. And then speech scientists from many different disciplines, not only at IU, but at UNT, at Fullerton, et cetera. So we've got stakeholders from lots of different places. And the ones that I really want to zoom in on and, and sort of focus on right now are those Chin undergraduate students. So we have really thought of our undergraduate students as learners, because when they're engaged in work with us, we are teaching them all sorts of generalizable research skills that will serve them while moving forward. But they're also teachers. They're teaching us a whole lot about not only their languages, but also their community and the community needs. And they're also burgeoning researchers. So we have undergraduate Chin students doing research projects of various types. And we are involved in this NSF rapid work because in March, our undergraduate students sort of said, you know what? We have to start translating material about COVID-19 because there isn't good material available in Li, and there is misinformation being spread. It's really time to pivot and, and put our focus there. So we did. And now I'll turn it back over to Chauvin.
One of the things that we wrote in our proposal, our rapid proposal to NSF, is that we wanted to investigate how monolingual fieldwork could improve the results of the information that we're gained. And so we talked then about training these IU students who are not necessarily in linguistics, but who want to be working on a project of this sort in basic documentation methodology, actually brand-new types of things, because, as I said, we were doing it over Zoom. And then also in being able to create transcriptions, either through using a practical orthography, or if that was not possible, then saying back slowly, using bold methodology, whatever they, they were hearing, so that it could be transcribed by somebody who could do that. And learning how to use some basic software like SayMore to actually enter in their transcriptions, which could then, transcriptions and translations, which could then feed into other kinds of software like Flex, where we could then, as a team, myself and RA that we're yet to, to hire, and partnering with Ken Van Bick, create annotated corpora of those interviews, conversations, personal narratives, whatever is that was naturally produced at these questioning sessions. And so that, those data, we thought, could be then archived at Courserl and used to, by, by Sarah, to create these kinds of materials that were visual materials and then written materials by, by Sarah's team for COVID-19 prevention and treatment.
And so just picking back up on that, we've already created a few visuals, but again, we're at the kind of beginning of data collection. And so it's, we never want to, on our end, the health communication and visualization end, you don't want to just build stuff that people won't use or that's not built out of community-based insights. And I'm sure that is very obvious to many of you, because that, you know, your work emphasizes that really well. But a lot of times, that is how health education and health communication content is built, is that doctors or health educators create some stuff, they make visual infographics and give it out to community members, but the community members' voices are often not heard, and they aren't often included. And so again, we're at the beginning process of that, of that phase. And so as soon as we start kind of collecting more interviews and start transcribing them and analyzing this data, we'll have a better understanding of how the Chin community in Indiana talks about COVID and, and public health and, and health and disease and wellness generally. And so again, we only kind of begin to think about what these visuals might look like and how they're different and tailored to this community versus the general public or global public, as it seems the CDC and the World Health Organization are treating them right now. So that's kind of, we, I posed one of the, the research questions that we have down below, and some of the graphics that my undergraduate student created this summer, just in response to some of the stuff that we had seen and what we knew about the Chin community already. But again, we're going to elicit insights and responses to these graphics, but also create more graphics in the meantime, too. If you can go to the next slide. And just to reiterate this, too, is that kind of our job is never done, right? With COVID, COVID stuff has been ongoing, obviously, since March, February, January even. And so the conversation can't end with one finding for a research project. And so in this graphic, I kind of just wanted to, infographics, I kind of wanted to emphasize the kind of ongoing cyclical nature of our research, is that we've already reviewed kind of existing information about health experiences, and that led us to be able to kind of create an interview guide that will be implemented in this project that's based on what we know. But we know that over time, as we hear from community members, that interview guide is going to develop, and it's going to kind of hone in on specific questions that we still have, based on what we've learned. And in, in time, too, we're going to develop those infographics based on what we're hearing. But again, it's, it's a cyclical process where we don't want to just finish and feel like we're, we're done, we're, we're walking away from this project. It's very much an ongoing process that will need lots of iterations before it's, before it's actually done. There's a lot to be done in this area, for sure.
Is this mine?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. And is this our last slide, then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Great. So, you know, I just want to thank you all for giving us your attention and, and, you know, we're going to open it up to questions very, very shortly, because we felt like this was a good thing to bring to you, because it, it's something we can ask you. Like, we felt like it was a good way to use methods of collection, of data collection, to increase the kinds of data that we're collecting and performing linguistic analysis on to really increase the broader impact of what we're doing. So health communication message is, is going to be in that. Also, the broader impacts, of course, of training students. So we're always talking about how there's so many languages to document, there's not enough time. Would this be, are there people that we can then be partnering with to say, okay, you're a health communication person, I'm a linguist, can we offer a course together? Can we have students working on these kind of shared pieces of language that need to be transcribed, translated, translated, and then thought through for communication? So can we then create some modules for teaching, not just basic language documentation, but socially-directed language documentation? And we're, we're attempting to build, we built sort of a course on the coursel.unt.eu website that has a little bit on political instability and language documentation, and we're, we're aiming to build something on health and language documentation as pieces that can be added to other, other types of language documentation that we do. And so I am going to ask Kelly, what should we say about disseminated work and publicly accessible?
So I'll say that we, we are actually, my team is disseminating work already, but it is in Li. So we've been translating materials. It is a challenge, right? Because, you know, a lot of the language from the CDC or the World Health Organization is confusing, but we have been disseminating that material so far. We're also partnering with Side Effects, which is a public radio initiative focused on health access. And so we've been publishing some things, again, in Li through them. But in terms of work related to this project and the publicly accessible archive, those materials in Li actually already constitute, you know, documents that have connected speech, but it happens to be written. I think that what can point it out early on is this will actually, when we have finished conducting interviews, transcribing them and uploading them to Courserl, this will constitute the first conversational corpus of Li that exists. And so I guess stay tuned for that.
Stay tuned. Yeah. Well, with that, I think we are ready to take questions. And I want to thank, you know, Ken for, for joining and.
Can I make a quick comment?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
You, you have the last word. Yeah.
Okay. Just a quick comment about the language that you might not see. You familiar, the writing, like LUTUV? So that is a new coined language for, we usually spell as LAUTU. And I think I will, if possible, I would like to include that former name or like, you know, widely non-name. And actually, the Lautu community would like to include that name in anything that we do. So.
What, what won't come as a surprise to anyone is that this is a hotly contested political, political conversation. So I will specify, we work with a speaker from Narring, and we have worked mostly with her. She strongly prefers Lutuv, but we can also add Lautu in parentheses. Yeah. I'm going to stop the share.
Yeah. Yeah, why don't we do that?
I was going to say, there's more than one Lautu group, aren't there? There's not just Narring, but there are other language varieties of Lautu.
Yeah, absolutely. That's just one, one town. Yep.
One village.
One village, yeah. So I believe there are 13.
Well, I see that Stephen Moore is here, and I'm wondering, Stephen, if you had any comments that you wanted to make.
Well, yes. And I'm very sorry about this, but back in, I just wanted to point out that an international organization called the Translation Commons, back in April and May, they were organizing a, an online site where communities could upload their own message for five COVID-19 points. And they actually added to it the ability to include recordings, spoken recordings, and this would be useful in all those communities where many people don't read. And I was about to share with you the links to all of this, and they're all broken this morning.
Oh, no.
So what I'm actually doing as we speak is sending a message to the Translation Commons people to ask why. But these links, the last time I checked them, they worked. But as we know, that sometimes happens. So I guess this, this, so the Translation Commons had put up this message. I could probably add a PDF of one example of what they did, and I'll do that in a minute to, to, so that you can see it. But unfortunately, the, the link is now not working. So that's a bit embarrassing, because it would have been a nice thing to mention, but there you go.
We did look at, we looked at that earlier this year. And I guess I should just say, sort of the, you know, in terms of translating existing materials, we think this is a necessary step. The aim for our interviews is to figure out what, what is not being, what is not being addressed via that step. So we know that different groups have different beliefs around the things that will keep you healthy and the things that will put you at risk. And, you know, CDC, WHO materials, they just don't account for that. They can't, right? So they go for broad coverage at the sort of cost of specificity, and we're hoping to figure out how to get more specific.
Yes. If I may just quickly say, the other issue that, you know, I mentioned in, in this connection when there was, because it was a lot of work done in Australia about this, too, as you probably would be aware, was that the whole question of the fact that in so many of these communities, so many people are not actually using the written form. So maybe it is actually better to create something that's a, you know, a video or a sound thing. Anyway, I'll, I'll put up one of these examples for people to at least see what they did look like when they worked.
Any other comments or questions?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Be unmuted. So thank you for this. And I, we've, so Jeff, Jeff Childs and Sienna Craig and I, who are the co-eyes on the, on our rapid project. So I know that Sienna was trying to team up with some people at the Endangered Languages Alliance in New York to do some work with diaspora communities who live in Queens. So there's like all of these Bodish and many Tamangic speakers who relocated to Queens. And so they, they had some plans to, I don't know if they were able to follow through with it, but any, maybe you might know whether or not they were able to seek rapid funding through the anthropology program to, to do some work there. But, and Jeff Childs shared with me an interview, which I can also paste the link, with a Nubri, a Lama from, who's, who's a Nubri speaker. It's either Nubri or Tsum. Let's see, Nubri, yeah. And, and so I just was kind of echoing this idea that, that you mentioned, that different, these communities, they filter the, they filter the phenomenon and the pandemic and idea. and ideas about it through their own cultural understanding. And there's a really interesting interview with a Nubri-speaking Lama that has been kind of roughly translated into English, layering a lot of local causes that I even talked about in my talk the other day, but with also very kind of COVID types of responses. So there's like this whole kind of, you know, the pandemic, again, is a kind of consequence of moral decay. What can people do about it? Well, they should wear a mask. They should stay six feet apart. They should practice good hygiene and that kind of thing. And so it was really interesting to see this mixture. So I'll paste this link into the chat box so that you can see like some of the interesting layers and interweavings, I guess, of different types of cultural impacts and understandings.
Well, that would be super helpful and very interesting, yeah. So you get a different cause, but the consequences, or the interventions are. But if we are able to speak on the same level or speak the same language, then we can actually identify the cause that's going to make people behave in a certain way. So, yeah, yeah.
I had a comment. This is Liberty. And I had a colleague who got her doctorate from UT Austin in linguistic anthropology. Her name is Vivian Nudik. And she works, I don't know if you're familiar, it sounds like you may be familiar with her work. She had been heavily involved. She works on, she helping to coordinate for native speakers of languages, indigenous languages of Mexico and Latin America, who were, you know, under a huge amount of trauma during the refugee crisis for things like, you know, and helping to get them to have access to legal and health issues. And I just thought she has some tremendously thoughtful perspectives, and it'd be good to sync up with her.
Thank you so much. Actually, Tony Woodbury, who I think was also your advisor and mine as well, is the person who put me in touch with Vivian Nudik. And I started thinking about it. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here. But, yeah, that's absolutely, we need to get in touch with her again, and, yeah.
Can I just sort of make a final comment? If we're, I think we're close to being out of time. Well, we have two minutes, right? So I just want to sort of emphasize that, you know, I think that we, as linguists, have an entire set of skills and a huge set of resources that we can leverage for good in situations like this. And, you know, so in Indianapolis, Burmese translators and interpreters are needed second most, just after Spanish. We work with a company or talk with a company who gets most of those requests, and they are always for Burmese. And we know that most of the people going into emergency rooms do not need Burmese translators. They need some Chin language. So, you know, what has been really interesting is that as we start, you know, created the chinlanguages.org website, we just start getting more and more questions from people who don't even know where to go to figure out what languages are needed. And so I don't have an answer to this, but I do think this is one thing that we, as people affiliated with universities, can do is if we can just start putting out basic information. You know, so we have created lists of languages and shared them with people at various hospitals, so they can at least go through and try to figure out by saying the name, is it this, is it this, is it this? It seems like these things should exist, but they don't. And so I'm not super comfortable doing this. This is nothing I'm trained for. But like, if not us, then who? So that's sort of my pitch. And again, back to the students as the sort of crucial members of this team. I'm not a community insider. My students are. They are, you know, they have to translate and interpret for their parents and community members all the time. So they really intimately understand what the needs are and can really help us focus our work.
Thank you so much, Kelly, and thank you, Sarah and Ken. We are going to have to stop there, but maybe you'll join us later on this evening for our get-together. We'll have some conversation then. Our next session starts at 6:15, so I just wanted to give people at least a few minutes to relax and then come back at that time. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for your attention. Bye-bye.
Thank you, everyone. Goodbye.
Thank you, Kelly. I don't know if Sarah's still there.
I think she skedaddled.
Skedaddled, okay.
Yeah.
Well, maybe see you at the next session. Nancy's speaking, I think.
Yeah. JC, I'm sorry I didn't mention you. Samson's video tile was like right in my view, and yours wasn't. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's cool. You got to see the back of my head in one of the photos.
Yeah, you were making a joke in that picture.
Yeah, I'm the one who's making everyone laugh.
You're the funny one.
There was, a couple of months ago, someone here in Australia, Mahesh, who was collecting lists of all the kinds of translations of materials related to COVID-19. Are you familiar with that? His, try and find a recent version of that email and send it to you if I can find your email.
It's just.
Chauvin, anyway.
Yeah, I can put it in the chat. This is my last name at unt.edu.
No, you know, yours I have.
You have mine. I can pass it on to everyone else.
Kelly, but, yeah, okay.
Put you all in touch, yeah. But we would definitely like to keep in touch with you, because you have made some materials for, right, for our natural communities, or?
Yeah, so we did about 10 of these posters. I added a link to, I had uploaded one or two of them to the session earlier. And they had even added the ability for the message to be added in sound. But then suddenly this morning, the links don't work, so I.
That's the one, okay.
Yeah, so.
I swear it's just because you wanted to share it with us.
Yeah, well, I've told them.
We broke them.
Yeah, well, I just told them that, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.